Called the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the July 21st, 2015 Post Falls City Council meeting. We started the evening with the budget workshop at 5:00 o'clock and now are in regular session. Shannon, please note that all council members are present. And under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations, we have a lengthy proclamation on the Americans with Disabilities Act 25th anniversary, so please bear with me. Whereas some 57 million Americans and some 195,000 Idahoans have disabilities which have also caused many of them to suffer indignities of discrimination, and whereas on July 1st, 1988, the Idaho Human Rights Act was amended to prohibit employment discrimination against individuals with disabilities, and on July 26th, 1990, President George H.W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities, and whereas it is the purpose of this act to provide a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities, and whereas it is also the purpose of this act to provide clear, strong, consistent, and forcible standards addressing discrimination against individuals with disabilities, and whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers and changing perceptions and promoted full participation in their community, city, county, state, country, and life, and whereas the city of Post Falls and state of Idaho are committed to providing the most integrated, least restrictive environments for people with disabilities and their families to live in freedom and enjoy the promise of education, employment, effective communication, participation in their communities, and in the culture and sports offered in Post Falls, and whereas it is fitting and appropriate to recognize this date and to heighten public awareness of the 25th anniversary of the Americans with Disability Act. Now therefore, I, Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the city of Post Falls, Idaho, do hereby proclaim Monday, July 26th, 2015, to be Americans with Disability Act Awareness Day in Post Falls, and do hereby reaffirm the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if public entities remain committed in their efforts to fully implement the ADA, and that the city of Post Falls celebrates and recognizes the progress that has been made to fulfill the promise of the ADA, dated this 21st day of July 2015. And we have a parade update?
Yes, Chief Merritt, I believe, is going to-
Chief.
-give us our parade update.
Thanks very much. I'd like to just give a quick update on the parade. We had a really great event on July 11th, and really was a bunch of partners getting together and making it happen, the city and Kootenay Fire and Post Falls Police Department and everybody else that helped. In fact, if you're on the committee, can you stand up for me? If you're on the parade committee, we've got John and Pam and Rich. Bert, come on, Bert, stand up. You're in the back, that's nice. Carrie, you didn't stand up for us. You're one of our partners, you're the ones that coached us this year.
I was retired.
Well, I know that, but that's good. So, as many know, Chief Hogan and I started this Post Falls Community Ambassadors LLC really to take over, and tonight actually we're here to recognize both Bert and Carrie, so come on down, Bert. I know, we tricked you, sorry.
You know, when I saw Bert coming-
Is there a microphone right here? Good. Thanks.
Pam did lie to Bert, I'm sorry.
Yeah, come on down, please.
So I'm assuming he kind of-
Hi, Bertie.
Do you know the girl?
Good to see ya.
Congratulations, Bert.
So what we'd like to do tonight is to recognize the two of you for 25 years of outstanding leadership, both in time and talent, and coaching us through this year, and so on behalf of all the parade volunteers here, we have a little memento for you both to share, and this is from Bert to Carrie and Bert Thorson. Thanks for 25 years of outstanding parade, time, talent, and leadership from the 2015 Post Falls Parade Committee. Okay? And so that you can eat, here's a couple of gift cards to Capone's on behalf of the group as well. We heard that was your place to eat. Oh, this is nice, then. So really on behalf, this is really an opportunity for us to thank you for your guidance, to thank all the members here that had a big hand in putting on the parade this year. It'll be a little smoother next year, I'm sure. Those newbies up front kind of said, "I'm supposed to be up there, really?" And really just a way to say thank you from us and in front of the community as well for your many, many years of service. Thanks so much.
(applause).
Congratulations.
That's my update, sorry.
Thanks, Chief.
Hey, as a long time, you didn't make it quite 25 years, but maybe 23.
Thank you, Carrie, thank you, Bert. Chief, thank you very much. Bert, I just want you to know it was not us who lied to you to get you down here, so just so you know.
It was Pam.
It was Pam, yeah. Do have a few announcements. The President of the United States has ordered that all flags be flown at half-staff until July 25th to honor the victims of the tragedy in Chattanooga, Tennessee. I think that's very timely. I received a couple of emails yesterday stating that that order had not come down from the President, asking if we could in fact lower our flag, so I appreciate the fact that the President has ordered flags flown at half-staff for those Marines who were killed. Coffee with the cop. Post Falls Police Department's next Coffee with the Cop event is Wednesday, July 22nd, from 9:00 to 11:00 at Thomas Hammer Coffee in Post Falls. Join us for conversation and a cup of coffee with our officers, and to discuss community issues and build relationships. The first cup of coffee is free, and the PD will be giving away a free gunlock to anyone in attendance. The Post Falls Triathlon is Sunday, August 2nd at 8:00 a.m., and there's still time to sign up at the Park and Rec Office. The race is a half-k swim, a 19.6-k bike, and a 5-k run that starts and ends at Camalan Park. This is the final race in the Three Cities Triathlon Series. And with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Wolf to do me a favor, being I would have to crutch down and would probably fall and hurt myself, but it is our pleasure to recognize Emma Arman for the Clay Larkin Mayor's Youth Award, and I'm going to ask Emma to come down, and Alan, on behalf of the City Council and STCU, I'm going to ask if you'd go down and make the presentation.
Emma just finished her final year of River City Middle School and was nominated by family friend Jessica Bartley Chrysler. Emma is a member of the National Junior Honor Society and is an advocate against bullying, active in school clubs and projects, donates time and money to support local nonprofits. She was a great help and support to a friend who was grief-stricken by a tragic loss. Emma also coordinated TV news recognition for a River City middle school teacher. So with that, we'd like to award this to Emma.
Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations again, Emma and Alan, thank you very much for making the presentation. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the July 7th, 2015 council meeting. Item B is payables, June 30th through July 13th, 2015. Item C is disposal of surplus office equipment from the police department. Item D is Tullamore Preliminary PUD Street Lighting Development Agreement Addendum. Item E is new alcohol license request, new Big Smoke located at 3134 East Mullen Avenue, Suite A. Item F is banking services contract with Columbia Bank. Item G is Tullamore Fourth Edition Subdivision Plaid Application. Item H is frontage improvement waiver request for Lisa Wolfe at 105 East 9th Avenue. Item I is Crown Point Third Edition Construction Improvement Agreement.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
I have one question, Mr. Merritt. On the item F, the bank banking services, does that go out for bid every few years?
We used to do it every five years. We have continued with Columbia Bank because they offer us the services at $350 a month, and that covers all of our services, and we haven't had any banks that have even come close to that level. When I started here, we were paying about $1,200 to $1,500 a month, and that's when we were a city of about $12,000. And so Columbia has been doing this, when it was Panhandle State Bank, they came in with this offer, and they've continued to offer this to us, and we have renewed with them for the last three years.
I do entertain a motion.
I move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Motion second, further discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearings, and we have none this evening. Next up is unfinished business, and it's an update on 702 North Spokane Street and 105 East 9th Avenue.
I had sent out an email, I believe, also. Russ had sent out an email on 702 North Spokane Street, but to update you with where we're at today, the permit was ready today for pickup for the building itself, and on the planning and zoning side and engineering side, their comments were sent, they engaged Mark Latham as their architect, and those comments were ready and sent to them today also, so everything is back into the applicant's hands to come back to us. The concern from John Eckhart was to have his facility open by the end of this month because he has to be out of his other facility, and so with the interaction with staff, it looks like they can make that happen. His contractor, Lyle, has been really easy to work with, and of course, turning it over to Mark has also helped.
But thank you.
So on 702 North Spokane Street, that's where we're at, and then on 105 East 9th Avenue, the frontage improvement waivers were on tonight's council meeting, and the public information, not, sorry, the public hearing information went out on the special use permit, and it'll be on the August 11th P&amp;Z agenda for them to build the garage out at their site.
I thank staff for working with both parties to try to make things move forward in expeditious as possible manners, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
I've got comments. I guess what kind of bothers me on both of these is had the people not shown up in front of city council either through Council of Wilhelm or a representative of one of the owners. Would they still be floundering? I don't, I think what transpired here tells us we need to micromanage, and we don't want to, and we shouldn't. Linda provided us some great info on residential homes that are located in commercial area, and I believe the number is close to 300?
Four forty. It was 447, but 217 of them were condominiums, so I kicked those out, and we ended up with 227 or 230.
200 and some. One thing that Linda pointed out when she provided us with that number was the fact that by treating a residential property as commercial, because they're in a commercial zone by hook or by crook, I'm sure there's people bought homes that didn't even know they were in a commercial zone. I think on East 9th Street, they were trying to help out a friend and a neighbor by not objecting to becoming commercial, and at the same time, I doubt that the city said, "Well, down the road, we're going to bite you in the back if you try and do anything to your home." What Linda pointed out was by doing that, we make it economically impossible for the average family to improve their home. So we're saying, "Good, let it go to blight," I guess, because we have rules that just don't fit, but they fit the zone you're in. I would like to have staff come up with something in the form of an ordinance that eliminates these problems by saying, "If you're going to do a remodel, going to do an addition, whatever, to your home that is clearly residential in nature, that the commercial codes do not apply," such as what happened on 9th Street. So I would like to get, I don't know if we need to make a motion here, if I do, then I'm doing a motion, that we come back with an ordinance that provides some protection for residential homes that are stuck in a commercial zone, so that they don't go through this, and so people don't have to come to council to get a fair deal, so to speak.
I just have a question about that. So how about, almost 200 and some homes in that commercial, could there be a zone change? Why couldn't there be a zone change, so it would be residential R1 instead of commercial?
You have a number of options that you could choose. You could do a zone change, or you could make, and I don't know, this may have to go through P&amp;Z, Alan may know more about this than I do, as far as making, it's pretty standard across the United States if you're in a commercial zone and you have a residential home. For example, my grandmother bought one on Highway 41 in Rathdrom, that if her house burnt down, she couldn't rebuild it. That's the normal code, that's how it comes packaged. We could change that code, I just don't know if it has to go to P&amp;Z first before it comes to council?
Probably does.
I believe so. So if you made that motion, then we would go through the process of whatever that needed to be.
That would be fine, but the fact that other cities screwed it up, I don't think we need to. I think we've always tried to play a more level playing field for our residents than that, and this really was an eye-opener for me, to realize that that many people can't financially afford to redo their homes because of restrictions. We, we're supposed to work for them, not the other way around.
Right, I'm just telling you, it's pretty standard, so it wasn't you guys or the other council that went out of their way to make it this way, so you can change it.
I'd like to see us move in the direction of taking that burden off of them.
Okay.
Skip. I don't disagree with what you're proposing, I just think it's a bigger issue than just this one piece. I would, and I suggested last time that we have a workshop and work through that issue plus some other issues that we have, and maybe we can ball it all together to make it all work, because-
Whatever, as long as we make some progress this direction.
I think we definitely want to make some progress, because I feel exactly the same way. I don't want to see our citizens feel like they have to come to, you know, city council and complain to get some action. I'd love to be able to give the staff more direction on how to work through some of these things. I think we've kind of hamstrung them a certain amount with some of those ordinances. We, you know, just like we talked about in the workshop, I mean, they can't even waive a fee. So I'd like to talk about it in a workshop, come back, give them a little bit more power to make some of those decisions.
I fully agree.
Good idea.
Is that-
Right, which we, that's later in the agenda, under seven administrative staff reports. Item B is the workshops that Alan requested.
I'm willing to withdraw my motion at this time.
But your feelings are stated, so we'll move forward.
But I too agree with Skip, and I applaud everybody in the city that works hard to find a way to make these things happen, so let's just make it a little easier on them and our citizens.
Unfortunately, you have ordinances you have to enforce, and sometimes common sense or logic is lacking, so how do you fix it?
Right, and I, you know, the crux of the 702 North Spokane Street was the change of use, which we're still enforcing that change of use, and so I would say that that resolution would have been the same whether she came forward at council or not. I think just getting them in a room together, what we had was a tenant and an owner who were talking individually with staff, trying to get staff to meet with the two of them in the same room at the same time is really what made that happen.
Good.
Okay. Thank you very much. Citizens' issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If anyone cares to address the council, come forward, introduce yourself, please, with your name, and we'll give you five minutes. Go with Chief, and then we'll come to you, Barry.
Thanks, Warren Fire Chief, KCFR. I just want to just take a couple of minutes here and just talk about the consistent and persistent dry hot weather. You know, we're chasing a few grass fires out there, sometimes it's motorcycle riding. We have a lot of illegal burning going on in the community that we're responding to and putting them out, so we need to be super mindful until we get a decent amount of rainfall going forward. So we are chasing a few fires right now, so thanks very much, yes.
As long as you got the mic, can you just do a real brief rundown of what is illegal burning, what's not illegal burning in the city limits?
No burning in the city.
There you go.
It's just that simple, yeah. You are allowed to have a fire pit in your backyard, but I just ask people to be very responsible. Don't leave it unattended. Be there all the time, put it out before you go to bed, make sure it's safe away from the structure. Things are just really tinder-dry, and even if we get a good solid rainfall, those light fuels dry out, and the wind and hot temperatures really in just a couple of hours, and we're right back where we were. We're so far behind. So no fires. I mean, that's the best thing, is just don't light a fire. You're not even supposed to smoke in the woods now, you're supposed to do it in your vehicles. Your charcoal barbecue's got to be enclosed in your backyard, make sure it's safe.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Rubin.
Just a point of clarification that struck me down at the budget workshop regarding the dates on the presentation of the proposed budget and the public hearing. I was under the impression that the public hearing was going to be after the presentation of the budget, so the public could have time to look at the numbers, digest the budget, et cetera, and then come back at the public hearing to talk about that. So either I misinterpreted the dates that I saw, or perhaps that's not the intent of council, so perhaps somebody could set me straight on the sequence of dates on that one. Thank you.
I don't know, he can, I'm confused by what your question is, but yeah, we have two public hearings coming up for the fees in August, and we have a public hearing for the budget itself in August. Is that what you're referring to?
Is the public hearing on the budget scheduled for the same date as the presentation of the budget? Because it was my impression from discussions from last year's budget hearing that the public hearing on the budget itself was supposed to be subsequent to the presentation of the budget by, to council, for council.
There's two, like, the public hearings on, the fees the same night, and the orders, the budget hearing the same night as the fee resolution fees, so it's both on the 18th. Two, I have the fee resolutions on, the fee hearings on the 18th, the budget hearings on the 18th.
But there's also a fee hearing on the first meeting in August.
The fee is a separate issue from the budget in total.
That's correct.
So it was my understanding that the public hearing was supposed to be subsequent to the presentation of the actual city budget. It's not part of the fee hearings, it's, so I guess I'm just confused, and-
Can we present the budget?
The budget is ready at this time, and it's, is it available online?
Not yet, but it will be tomorrow.
Yeah, it'll be available online after our workshop tonight.
Okay, that's not the impression I was under based on last time's discussions and whatnot, so, okay, that's fine, thank you.
So the information on the budget will be available, but you were looking for an actual presentation?
That's correct. I thought we had all agreed last year that that was the way it was going to be, but that's okay.
The presentation was tonight at the workshop, is that what you're asking for? I'm not sure, I'm-
But you haven't looked at the total budget yet, and that's what you wanted to do.
No. I think Carrie might understand what I'm driving at.
Yeah, I'm recalling that same thing, that we're at a, at a meeting, a council meeting, the budget is presented, and then at the next meeting is when the public hearing is, where people then at a public hearing would actually have questions, because I think at the public hearing is when, prior to the public hearing, moments before the presentation is made, but you haven't had a chance to look through it.
And here the pros and cons.
So all you really need is the budget being on the August, it's not August 1st, but whatever the first meeting is on August.
So we can make, you can make a presentation on the budget. August 4th, we can have a presentation on it?
Barry, so they'll present at the August 4th meeting, public hearing on the 18th.
That's fine, thank you.
That's what I thought it was, too. I remember that, too, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Anybody else?
No.
You guys are sitting on the wrong side.
Definitely. Bob Flowers, well, I hate to beat a dead dog, but Avista, I am so fed up with those guys.
It's actually on tonight's agenda, so technically, we shouldn't allow you to speak about it, but the mayor-
It is on the agenda, so I tell you what, Bob, listen to the presentation, let us know your thoughts afterwards, but we'll get a follow-up. I drove that area as well, so I know what you're talking about.
I drive it every day, it's, thank you.
So that work for you?
That'll work.
Good, thanks, Bob.
I want to stay by the rules.
Anyone else? Next item is new business, we have none. Ordinances and resolution, we have the resolution dealing with the preliminary fiscal year 2016 budget.
And this just allows us to advertise for the public hearing.
Move to approve the resolution for the fiscal year 2016 budget.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up is administrative and staff reports, Avista gas line update.
Yes, we have spoken with Avista about the chip sealing of the streets that they have gone in and actually cut into. Ponderosa seems to be the most invasive, and they had a lot of difficulty locating lines on Ponderosa. In fact, they found some water lines that were not even listed and had to be added to the maps, and they are suggesting or recommending that we allow asphalt to come in and chip seal over just the patches themselves, and then that will, in fact, fade to match by next year. I asked Jim Porter, our street superintendent, if he'd heard of such a thing, because this, according to Sue Adams from Avista, is the recommended methodology used by Avista in all the areas where they cut into the streets in order to replace gas lines, and Jim says, "No, he had not heard of that, but he would be willing to let them come in and do that and see what it looks like at that point in time." It will initially be darker when they first chip seal that area than what the rest of the street is, but should fade with weather to match the rest of the street. So they apologize for it taking so long to come out and actually fill in those patching, but they are supposed to be out this week or the beginning of next week and have that completed.
Well, the question I would have is, the coloring may be different for the first year, but will it smooth it out to where it was before?
They're saying it's going to smooth it out. I'm still a little leery as to whether or not that's true, and I want to continue the negotiations with Avista on this. One of my recommendations would be perhaps they take that money that they were going to use to just patch those individual pieces and put that towards the entire chip seal, and see if we could maybe get them to contribute some extra dollars and re-chip seal those whole areas. Again, the biggest street that we have an issue with is because of the number of cuts is Ponderosa, also that was a brand-new street. They just went in and totally repaved that street three years ago, and then went out and chip sealed and seal coated it the fall before they started cutting into it, and so anytime you cut into a street, it's never quite the same, but having a total chip seal over the entire street would be smoother, I believe, than just coming in and patch-chip sealing it. And I just got that email from, they had, one of their personnel was injured and is out, and so it took him an extra couple of days to get back to me.
So Mr. Flowers, to answer your question, staff is working with them to try to get resolution that is satisfactory at all, and proof is in the pudding, but we will stay on top of it. Joe.
I guess I share your skepticism that just patching it's going to be any good. I don't know what kind of leverage we have at all, if any. I'm going to chalk that up to lessons learned category for the next contracts, I suppose, but if we can pretty much indicate that we don't think that's going to work, and they're going to come back and redo the whole thing anyway, it's cheaper just to do it once than twice.
Right.
So, and you've probably already gone down that road, but-
No, I just got the email this afternoon, late this afternoon, stating on what they had proposed doing, so.
That's, yeah, it's not going to work.
Any comments on that?
I just have a question, as far as what's their rights to go in and do this kind of work?
We have franchise agreements with them, and so we have franchise agreements on the gas side and on the electrical side, and it does allow them to come in and do the cuts that are necessary, but they need to leave the streets in the basic same repair as when they got there, and so the question is whether or not this methodology they're going to use will leave that street in the same condition it was when they came in.
So we will have imp- So we will have input on that, then?
We have input on that, yes.
I have a question about that. Is there other places that maybe somebody, Jim Porter, could go look at where they've done this and?
Request that Avista provide us with some prior places that Jim could go look at.
Yeah, that'd be a great idea.
I like that idea.
You know, we had so much debate over chip seal a year or two ago, and the roads that were done have turned out very nice, so.
Yes, this last two years of chip seal has been very positively received, as much as you can on chip seal for post.
They did my road yesterday, and I tell you, they were, they were out sweeping today, and, and I know it's not the city, it's contractor, but I'm thus far very impressed with the work they're doing, so. Community development workshop options.
Staff met and started putting together a calendar and looking at what we wanna do as far as reviewing fees and also reviewing some of the ordinances that we have regarding community development and zoning ordinances. Much of this touches on what P&amp;Z also would be reviewing, and so we wanna have these workshops in a manner that P&amp;Z and council could meet together. And one of the conversations was whether or not, as a kickoff workshop, council would be amenable to a longer workshop, and so I brought that here, whether the workshop dates, typically, it's the second meeting of the council, and we meet at 5:00 PM, but whether that would work, meeting at like a 3:00 o'clock timeframe, or allowing us to extend into a council meeting and maybe starting council meeting later, or if just doing it maybe in the morning or evening on a different day. So what we're looking for, for you guys, is input on what, how you wanna see the setup. The conversations for staff was, it's so much information, it's hard to put it together in one hour, and really, it's 45 minutes, to have that three-to-four hour timeframe at the beginning and at the end, and then try to do the one-hour workshops in between. And so we need to know, as far as your schedules go, which is best, doing the workshop on that meeting date, on the second meeting in August, and starting it early and, or possibly delaying council meeting, or having a different date altogether.
That would be like at 3:00, you say, if we did it on the same date?
Yes.
Does that make sense? Would you prefer to do it on an evening where there's no council meeting?
I'd rather do it on a night when we don't have a council meeting, and that way, if we do run 10 minutes over or whatever, we're not, we can, we can do it, so.
I think it's gonna take more than one.
It will. You're gonna have a four-hour kickoff, and then we'll have probably three or four of your workshops in between, and then we'll end with another three-to-four hour session.
Good with that.
So I agree. What I'll do is send out some dates and see if those, Joe, I know your schedule tends to be the harder one.
I'm the outlier here, so I might even speak up.
So evening, though, for you would be better than trying to do a morning workshop, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there anyone here who has difficulty with a particular evening that you can't meet on?
Sunday.
First and third Tuesdays for me.
Okay.
I'll give you what you need.
I will get information out to everyone, and we'll also include the P&amp;Z commission on those so that they know what time we're gonna be meeting and invite them.
I don't know if you can throw a Friday in there somewhere and see how these guys react to it, but that's the, that's the free.
I was thinking Saturday.
It's fine.
Don't think too long.
Nice try.
What time will you visit on a Friday?
Anytime after 2:00.
Anytime after 2:00 on a Friday?
Right.
Is your pizza involved?
I know a lot of people are buzzing out early on Fridays.
Right, I will send out an email, and if I don't hear back from you, Shannon will be calling you to, to go over what we have for possible dates.
Good. Thank you. Mayor comments. Work is started on the upgrades to the city's water reclamation facility. Over the next 18 months, the city's contractor, TML Construction, will build a new headworks, two flow equalization tanks, a solid loading facility, and odor control system. These upgrades are the first of two phases necessary to comply with the city's NPDES permit issued by the EPA, which allows the city to return clean and disinfected water to the Spokane River. This Phase 1 project has a budget of $14.75 million. To assist in financing the project, the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality awarded the city a $10.8 million state revolving fund loan at 2.25% interest. The loan is projected to save ratepayers $3.3 million in debt servicing expenses when you compare it to what the market rate would be on, on a loan like this. JUB engineers did the design work on the project and will provide construction management services to the city during the project. So we've talked for the last year or two years about wastewater and the upgrades and the EPA, et cetera, and we're, we're in the thick of it, so to speak. Also, we had the dedication of the fish. Again, thank you very much to Harmony Oaks, who did a tremendous job on painting it. Thanks to staff who got it installed. It's a great addition, and I appreciate the Jack hosting the unveiling and everybody who was involved, so very nice, very nice piece of art, and the price was right, so congratulations to all involved. Council comments. Carrie.
First of all, this is really important, it's at the top of my list. Council Malloy has a birthday tomorrow, so.
Happy birthday!
And then tomorrow, Wednesday, which is Wednesday, starting at 7:00, but the doors open at 6:30, the Post Falls Library is kicking off their centennial year in 2015 with the Best of McManus. It's a wonderful program, and it's part of the, I think it's the fourth in the series of the Frank Henderson Speaker Series, but it's great, it's a free presentation, family, family-friendly, and 7:00 at the Post Falls Library.
That's Wednesday.
Tomorrow, yeah, on Joe's birthday. They're kicking off Joe's birthday and the centennial of the Post Falls Library. And then I mentioned this to the council in an email earlier or later this afternoon, but the Citizens Review Board for the Greens Ferry overpass meets once a month, and we had a meeting this morning, and there will be a slideshow that was just fascinating. They have a drone, Wadsworth had a drone that has taken aerial photos of that construction, and so when you see them in a sequence, it's almost like a movie, it's just fascinating. So I believe they're going to, Brad Marshall said he'd see about getting that on the city website, but also the, the council and the Urban Renewal Commission has been invited to take a tour and go up top later in the month, but it's just, it's a fascinating process. I am not in construction, although I've worn a hard hat a time or two, but it is going to be phenomenal. I'm so excited about this project, and not just that it's almost done, but they, they're on schedule for November, so it's coming right along, but. So anyways, keep a, keep an eye out on the city's website, and I'm sure on the Urban Renewal Agency's website, too, for this slideshow.